As far as the work session, yeah, it's a little tricky with the work sessions. I mean, it's still meeting and it still goes by all the same rules as far as having a form etc. So you can have a discussion, I mean, it's not like, I mean, it's just no notes or action can be taken. Like, yeah, only one of you showed up, I mean, you can sit here and scream at the ceiling if you wanted to for 30 minutes, but uh... But just as long as you don't take any action.
You could, uh, just in this conversation, maybe you could talk about, who committed this line that you came in about?
Yeah, y'all can talk, y'all can have discussions, I mean, I can ask, if y'all have like questions or anything like that. I mean, I can go through all that, just as long as y'all don't actually approve minutes, taking actions as a board and as long as... And as long as you're not turning each other really trying to deliberate, I mean, it really doesn't matter if you're not taking action, but uh... So, so yeah, you... As long as nothing comes out of here that says the board takes this action, for the most part, you're fine until 6:30 and start up with the... And hopefully have a form at that time. Whenever we see him again. Yeah, there's something on my card too.
Y'all can sneak something in now. There's five of them. Has a new ordinance.
Just confirm, it's on my calendar, but tomorrow, y'all start at 6:00.
What adjustment is that, Kevin?
Tomorrow's, um, there's two of them. The first one is... The lumpen property, they're basically wanting to pay its own use instead of rezoning. And the second one is a parking, lower end parking. Dollar General.
Probably where they're trying, the newer?
Uh, it's 22 and George Roy.
Really? On the other corner or...
Other corner from the BP.
But not across the street where the trailers are, it is on the trailer side?
Yeah, you know where they built the big warehouse?
Sorry, Mr.... What you been doing in retirement?
More than I really wanted to, what you been doing though?
Oh, really?
To make her come here and...
Helpful job for people.
You know how to bush-hog?
A little bit.
Well, you can help me.
You've been doing a lot of that.
No, that's why I'm asking. That just happened.
You ready for me to start? Uh, residential wise, not a lot's changed, really nothing's changed. Candle Park, yeah, no changes. Emerald Ridge, same thing. Sallow Creek, really the same thing. Coslin, they're getting closer to the end. I don't know when they'll finish, but they don't have many infoparts there. Aberdeen, uh, they're building houses in phase one and they're still working on phase two, or site work. Setus Place, y'all approved the preliminary plant extension a few weeks ago. And that is set to expire on May 10th. We don't have, except for the special meeting we make, pardon I have, we don't have a meeting before May 10th. So it will expire before they get to the next plan or scheduled planning commission. So they may be coming back to y'all to get a preliminary plant approval for that. Timberline is, they're building houses in phase six. They, I know I've told y'all this like two, three times already, they're basically done with phase seven. I don't know what they're waiting on. I drove out there a little day and I'm not an engineer, but the only thing I see that's missing is basically stop signs and road signs. And that may be what they're waiting on, I don't know. Seth Gardens, it's going along really nice, they got the brick up already on it. It looks nice, looks really nice. Millport, we're out there today, they're steadily moving there, but they still got a long way to go. George Roy Parkway Apartments, I think most of y'all have heard about that. It's an apartment complex and they have their site plans are under review right now. I was trying to remember how many buildings it was, but I think they're gonna start with just a few buildings and as those fill out, they'll add more. But it's a, it's a pretty big complex. Commercial, there's only a few changes on commercial.
Building, you have an apartment, it was north of the state fire station on...
Yes, yes.
On the left?
On the left. And they've been, they've been zoning our board for 20 years, so... Comfort Inn, their building permit has been issued, that's the one that's going to be next to Zapman. So they should be working here pretty soon. Holiday Inn Express, that's the one next to the doctor's office on Beverly Drive. And they're going along pretty good. I asked Reggie when he thought they were gonna be ready and he said he didn't know, so I couldn't give you an open date on it. An estimated open date on it. Convenience Store on 42 and 70, they're working on that. Home's Too Sweet, that's the one on Metro Drive beside the Hampton Inn. They're moving along pretty good on it and that one, they, they're hoping for July, but Reggie said he don't think they'll wait July. McWayne Industries on Foundry Road, believe they're in the process, they're about to get their CEO, so they're basically done. I heard Ms. Kate talking to them today about getting their CEO, so... Waffle House on 84, I'm probably gonna take that off this list because I haven't heard anything from them in a while. So I don't know, they're the ones I told you, their engineers quit on, they're trying to find a new engineer, but that was, that was three months ago. Pediatric dentist office, I believe they're working on that. That's the one that was going in the old Alamo car building. And these are some new ones, it's a mini warehouse storage facility on Highway 31 before, uh... Before AC Lady. There's the padding cages on 31 on the top of the hill, just right before that. They have their plan, they just submitted their plans the other day. And Dollar General, Highway 22 and George Roy. They submitted their site plans and I sent my notes back, I don't know about anybody else, so... That one's coming and... There's a convenience store gonna be built on Highway 25 and 42, going towards Long Beach, right before the, almost right beside the fire station.
On the way after the rock.
That's it, same size. That's all I got.
Dollar General, that's, that's... What's the big warehouse there?
Uh, Sunbelt?
Yes, Sunbelt, alcohol.
It'll be in front of Sunbelt, but it's, I mean, it's still a good little ways from it.
It's past the gas station before you get to JR, isn't it?
No, that was the piece of property they were looking at. This is a new piece of property, it's right in front of Sunbelt.
Okay.
Yeah, if I had my computer, I could show it to you.
So if you turn on George Roy coming from, the, you turn to the right?
The, if you turn on the George Roy from 22, the BP's on your left and it will be on your right. And you'll, you'll go into it from George Roy.
I guess that piece of property was better because maybe it had to turn at night.
Probably so.
Did Mr. Clay, did he own that property?
Think so, but I'm not sure, Mr. Clay. I know he owned a bunch of the property on George Roy, but I don't know if he owned that one in particular. Now where the apartments are, they did buy that one, but... Look at James.
So Kevin, the, the Alabama Island building, that's gonna be a dentist office?
Pediatric dentist.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty big building for a dentist office, is it? Are they, the whole building?
Parts I know, parts I know, it's the whole building.
They've been working on that, have they been working on that, doing something to that? I didn't see it, I looked, it's about back for a month.
It's probably been about a month. That's it. And they, what's my point works? They're only gonna be on, I don't know if they bought this entire piece of property, but the Dollar General is only gonna be on... You'll follow my mouth, like, this part. And they're building a drive that will come off Georgia, comes off Georgia right there, comes that way. And there's really a gravel road right there, but you probably can't see it from the road, but it goes through there. This is not driving well. Comes through here, turns right there, and Dollar General entrance will be right there, and that road continues going this way to access this part.
Yeah, what, it's on there? Why? They really want to protect, they did that Friday, so it's probably just a... So if the board itself says there's not a hardship here, they're holding it very...
No, I'm saying that they did, they did grant it, they granted it on the qualifying term, but they didn't...
Hit line? Then they would, they would not, they would not, they said, you can receive a variance if you have to make sure that they're... Make sure that you get this setback down or whatever, then if they don't do that, then they don't get the variance. And for me, well, like you say, you have it for 30 days until you do this, etc., you know, whatever, hoops, have to jump for it. Then someone, the White Ward would be, you have it for 60 days so long as you A to C. And after 60 days, if you have it at A to C, you have to... Or they can variance, that's the way I would pull it off. But say they were, and this is just, I'm really gonna have them, they're, they're... Like, would you have denied their CO or denied a business license or anything like that? Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, any of the, my people face variance, we usually, most of the time, there's some kind of qualification to it. And it's some sort of a stream where you can pull it back and say, well, we only gave this to you if you did this, therefore you have variance. That's why I like to set some sort of timeframe for it, as opposed to just opening it, you know, as long as you get your... Anyway, I don't know what other technical issues they have other than just the simple fact that, you know, they're trying to put it...
Yeah, that's it. Oh. We're gonna have to call a special meeting made first for the rezoning of a piece of property that, um... I'm sure most of y'all already heard about, the new camper place that we talked about Monday, last Monday night. They, they are, they're asking for a rezon, but they're on a time crunch, like they said, doesn't they? So May 1st is the soonest that we can have the meeting and still make our timetables, the 21 days, the 15 days, and that, so... There will be a special meeting May 1st.
Okay, 6:30, we can go ahead and get started now. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Sitting here for chairman, for the chairman tonight. Thank you everybody for being here. We're gonna start with the approval of the minutes, okay, 10:00. We can do all those, 3:00, 10:00, then March 10:00. I have motion that, yeah, approved of the minutes and dismissed reading there. Do I have to make a motion?
I can, but I wasn't here on Fe, I went to here February, so I have to...
You have motion second? Second? Motion is second, that we approved of the minutes and dismissed reading. Okay, we'll move on with our reports from the end of the plan commission. Thank, we invited thanks we get from Kevin concerning the, the work session. No report from the commission members, I don't have a report. Just one thing I would like to say, Kevin, you mentioned about that extension we did for May, that's coming up, what, what is the solution to that?
I mean, I'm assuming, Brian, they could, if they wanted to, they could get on that special meeting, too.
Yeah.
And it's May 1st, so I'll reach out to them, see if they're willing to do.
Yeah, I mean, the special meeting can, can, the agenda can be formulated however, you know, whatever y'all want, but I'll reach out to them.
As you said, we, if we do it, maybe if we pass it, I have to do something different.
I think our next scheduled meeting was 12, so they missed it by two days. Is the May 1st meeting, is it, like, that's locked in, I need to put it on my calendar? Yes, that was as soon as, that was as soon as they, they could back it up here.
Okay. New business, we just, that's the, this, uh, the other mandates, the rezoning from that, that was reserved, A1.
We asked from Kevin, we're telling him, I think, or something like that.
No, it's just a annexed property we annexed a couple months ago, so we, in the past, kind of kept things in MR when they probably shouldn't have been, so I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, motion, motion that we, uh, approved of the rezon from MR to A1, do I get a second?
A second.
If you want the second, we're gonna go on, on the paper, try to sign it out?
Aha.
Any opposes?
John, anybody?
What's that?
Just put a vote on that, on that.
Anexation.
MR to A1. That's the only thing, we have on the agenda, right?
That's it.
It was mentioned, Brian, did Kevin, can you share with us?
No, 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 I, I think that as far as the timing, anything that y'all need to do, I think we've got all that kind of figured out, so there's nothing else really for me to add, I, I think that y'all got a plan, so...
That just mentioned, I think, before we, we, it was mentioned, John, and, and Brian, he wasn't here to have it, we just had a little discussion about the time, the change of the time, and the minute, you know, we set this time back to 6:30, maybe to 6:30 to have accommodated time. And you mentioned that we could be moved back up, I think if we had, by some, somebody in the board that were, I don't know, it was, said that Tommy may be...
He is going to resign, he hasn't officially done it yet, but he's gonna resign.
His job, his job, like, what?
George, can you get here at 5:30?
I can get here at 5:30.
Okay. When we do that, I'll bring you in 5 minutes. Yeah, thank you. Randy, remind me, and I'll have to repost it, I'll have to change my post, I barely changed the time.
That is how to go to council, I'm sorry, which one?
Changing the time of this meeting? No, all we have to do is just, just, if it's a regularly scheduled meeting, then, so, so long as, I'm, they can go through this, council doesn't have to take any action, but if it's gonna be a regularly scheduled action, then it has to be in, you know, kind of set out that it's the new regularly scheduled time, as opposed to being specially scheduled. That would, that would take a motion from the commission. Is that something we're gonna have?
Regular schedule meeting at 5:30?
Yeah, y'all can take what action.
Work session at 5:30 and getting the meeting at 6:00? Motion is second, that we change the time for our planning permission meeting from 5:30, work sessions at 6 o'clock, meetings on paper, that's signed by? Any opposed to that?
But this will not be for the May 1st, because we've already, I've posted it.
Yeah, we've already posted it, unless it's special call.
Yeah, it's a special call. Must interject, John?
You interject?